You got me? Okay. Let the record reflect, it's 4:07 and we'll call the work session meeting to order.
Good.
First up is Ms. Yuriai Brown.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. I do not. This is the budget presentation for the Human Resources Department for fiscal year 2526. Just getting started with a little bit of an introduction, the Human Resources Department does support every single department in the city. And we do function as a strategic partner for those departments. We manage the entire employee lifecycle from recruitment to retirement. And we support the fiscal year 2425 council strategic goals, those two specific goals that the Human Resources Department really focuses on supporting or striving for municipal excellence and enhancing opportunities for communication, but also supporting public service, health, and safety. Oftentimes, our human resources folks can get pigeonholed into just being the recruiting people or the benefits people, but we do a lot more than that. So what you see on this slide is a list of all of our core functions, all the different areas that Human Resources is really responsible for managing. And it's the full picture from, again, employee, full employee lifecycle from recruitment to retirement and everything in between. It also includes our management and administration of our Human Resources information system, records management, performance management, and of course, employee relations. This is a really good look at a visual of our current active employee population broken out by juice versus city employees. Juice is going to make up about 25% of our active employee population. On the left, you'll see that our new hires from October 1st to present in the current fiscal year, the proportions are about the same, about 25% of our new hires are going to juice with the rest of them coming to city. And the same goes for our separations when people are leaving the city for whatever reason, it's still about that 25% to 75%. When we start to dig in a little bit more to our turnover numbers, the reason why I wanted to dig into this is because one of our HR strategic goals for fiscal year 2425 is to reduce turnover by 15%. I can't manage that if I don't know where we started. So that's the reason why I decided to dig in a little bit more on our turnover numbers. Turnover by reason, resignation, voluntary resignation is making up 60% of our separations. And that has been fairly consistent from last year and this year. We've got about, we're lower this year to date on our involuntary terminations than we were last year. But we are seeing increases in retirement and other, those others are going to be things like medical separations or even death. So with the majority of our separations being by voluntary resignation, I decided to dig in a little bit deeper there and see why the tenure of people who are leaving, overall, you're going to see the overwhelming majority of the voluntary resignations haven't been with the city for five years. So we are losing the bulk of our people within that first five years. So if we can get them to stay at least beyond that five-year mark, we are more likely to retain them for the long haul. So 43% being in the first year last year, and then another 43% leaving between that first and five-year mark. This year, we're sitting at about 88% of the separations that we've seen being before that five-year mark. For generational, I want to go back one, a couple slides actually. On this, this reason for turnover, on those involuntary terminations, there's a note down at the bottom that I did want to call to your attention. All of the involuntary terminations had a tenure of less than five years. But 58% of those were let go within their first six months. So that to me speaks to our hiring practices and we probably need to be changing some things about the way that we are recruiting and how we're going about making selections if we're not even keeping people within the first six months. Generational demographics, we are seeing a multi-generational workforce here. We're certainly not unique in that front across the entire workforce. You've got four different generations in your active employee population with the majority of those being your millennials. Millennials are moving into leadership positions. They are kind of in that flux where you've got millennials coming in in entry-level positions, but also moving into leadership positions. Your baby boomers and part of your Gen X are getting into those retirement ages. And we're going to start looking at those retirement numbers and metrics here in just a moment. This graph really speaks to me in the area of we've got to start focusing on leadership development. We have to focus on succession planning, knowledge retention, knowledge transfer. Those are some of the strategic areas that we're going to be focused on moving into this next year. Our qualifications for retirement are that you have to be 60 years of age with five years of service or you can be any age with 20 years of service. As of right now, we've got 97 employees that are currently eligible for retirement, meaning that they could walk into HR tomorrow and say, I'm done, I'm going to file my TMRS. That's 20% of our current active employees. But beyond that, we've got another, an additional 52 employees who could retire within the next five years. So that's another 11% of our workforce. So when you start to think about a third of your workforce being eligible for retirement in the next five years and no solid formal succession plan in place, that puts us at a huge risk for knowledge loss. Some of our current recruiting and retention initiatives include digital recruiting. So as of right now, the city of Greenville is still accepting paper applications. That slows down the recruiting process significantly, but we're also missing out on a huge faction of the available workforce that just doesn't want to do a paper application. Everything is digital. People are moving toward technology. So moving to that digital recruitment should increase the caliber of candidate that we are able to attract, but also increase the pool of candidates that we're able to touch. Pre-employment skills assessments is something that we're going to implement, starting with the new fiscal year. It's not unusual for someone to look really good on paper, but when they come into the position, be unable to perform the skills that are necessary to be successful for the role. By doing pre-employment skills assessments, we can filter out people and be able to see exactly what they're capable of doing for specific positions. It's not something that we can use for every single position, but we can start to make better selections by using those assessments. We are going to start with a formal new hire orientation. This is going to look like once a month, all new hires start on the same day. Doesn't matter what department you're in, they all get the same message from the same source. It's a full day and it will also include some of the training that's necessary so that we can confirm that our new hires are getting that compliance training that's necessary before they start their roles. This should help with moving into a robust onboarding program. Again, this is speaking to the retention piece. We're losing people early on in their tenure with us. So by having a formal new hire orientation and a robust onboarding program, which includes specific touchpoints throughout their first full year of employment to make sure that we are increasing employee engagement, we should be able to see a positive impact on our retention numbers. I'd also like to implement a citywide learning management system. That citywide learning management system is going to tie directly into number six, which is our comprehensive succession planning program. We just finished talking about the possibility of, or I'm sorry, the probability of losing about a third of our active employees because of their ability to retire. By investing in those millennials and Gen Z'ers that are a part of our active employee population, we can factor that into our succession planning program and make sure that number seven, we're focused on that knowledge retention campaign. Number eight on there is going to be our exit and stay interviews. We've done exit interviews in the past, but unfortunately, it just has not been something that's been maintained over time. I've completely revamped that exit interview so that we can start to get more meaningful information about why we may be losing people. The exit interview is targeted to, thank you so much. Excuse me. The exit interview is targeted to voluntary resignations only and retirements. Oftentimes, people think that retirement is just because they don't want to work anymore. Sometimes people have been here long enough to retire, get that retirement check, and actually end up working somewhere else. We want to know if that's the case. So the exit interviews will give us excellent information about why people are leaving, but we are also going to implement stay interviews. So people who have been with the city for longer than five years, those stay interviews can give us insight about why they decided to stay. What are we doing well? What are some things that they believe we could do even better? So by having both sides of the coin, we can have information to adjust the way that we're handling the employee lifecycle. Shifting gears a little bit, the TMRS contribution rates for the 2026 are actually going to go down for the city. So our contribution right now is 17.17% of gross wages. That's going to go down to 16.92%, so positive on our side. When it comes to our medical insurance, we still have three offerings. We've got our high deductible health plan, the base plan, and the buy-up plan, which is kind of being filtered out at this point. We only have about five people on that buy-up plan. Our broker anticipates worst-case scenario that when we do our renewal, it'll go up about 11%. With the negotiating power that we have because of our lower loss ratio, so right now, our current loss ratio is about 76%. What that means is that the amount that we are putting into, that we're paying in premiums is, what we're paying out as far as claims is only about 76% of what we've already paid in as far as the premiums are concerned. So we are paying out less in claims than we're paying in in premiums, which gives us some negotiating power. The budget approach, we're budgeting about a 10% increase because we expect that the new rates are going to come in lower. Uh, that should keep us with an ability to keep the, the employee portion of the premiums flat. So no changes there. With the dental plan, we only have one offering, there are no planned, 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 planned changes. Uh, the current loss ratio for that is seventy-nine percent. And because we're bundling it with the, the medical, we've gotten a good rate on that and we're anticipating that that rate is going to remain flat as well. We are happy to announce that we have started a formal wellness program within the city that started in April, May-ish, uh, focused on encouraging employees to make healthier lifestyle choices. Uh, the big focus, big push is to customize that program to focus on having a positive impact on our insurance claims. So as we look at utilization and the areas that, uh, do have modifiable risk factors, we want to make sure that we are factoring that into our wellness programming. And that comes in the form of, um, onsite health screenings, uh, webinars, workshops, challenges, things of that nature. Uh, the, the way that we are going to measure success is going to be through our participation rates, the employee feedback, but also reductions in our absenteeism and the correlation to the insurance claims data. Uh, the good thing about this wellness program is that through Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, uh, we do get a wellness reimbursement. So the, the program is pretty much funded by the wellness reimbursement.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Reimbursed from who to who?
From Blue Cross Blue Shield. So basically, whatever we spend, uh, on the wellness program, we submit those invoices directly to Blue Cross Blue Shield and then they reimburse us the cost.
That's between us and BCBS?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Things that we are currently working on is the UKG rebuild. Uh, UKG is our human resources information system, um, that needed to be revamped in order to work as efficiently and effectively as we needed to, uh, but also to roll out modules that have to date not been activated in the system. That's about a six to eight-month process. Um, and the finish, uh, of the build should happen around December-ish. Um, employee handbook updates. So we had a policy manual that had not been updated since twenty-eighteen, which was a big focus when I first started here in, uh, February. The employee handbook has now been separated from the city policies. Uh, the handbook, the first draft of that has already been completed. Uh, we're waiting for some reviews and some edits and then we'll be able to roll that out. The difference is that the employee handbook being separate from the citywide policies is that we want to put something in the hands of our employees that really speaks to what they truly need to know as an employee coming in, not a seventy-six-page document that outlines every detail of every policy. Those policies are going to be separate, housed in a central repository that anyone with a Greenville email address has access to. And then lastly, our leadership, uh, training and development. Compliance and leadership training is going to be a huge part of our training and development initiative. Uh, starting next week, actually, we've got our reasonable suspicion training for supervisors. Um, those sessions will be held on Monday and Tuesday. And then later, uh, in August, we'll be having our FMLA workers comp and limited-duty refresher training. That's specific to compliance. When it comes to a leadership training initiative, however, we also have our Leadership Academy. So Greenville organizational leadership development, it's also called, also known as GOLD, is going to be a four-to-six-month training program with one session per month for all of our leadership roles. Um, it's going to include things like strategic leadership, um, interpersonal skills, team building, et cetera. Uh, this in-house training program has been customized to Greenville. Um, it will be taught by me, um, and eventually will also include guest speakers. Some of our other future initiatives is an extensive risk management program that's going to be heavily focused on our compliance factors. We do want to bring us, bring ourselves into the twenty-first century by doing a major paper-to-digital conversion of our records in HR. Uh, performance management program is going to be totally revamped. Um, instead of the, the paper staunch performance appraisal, it will be more of an ongoing engagement over time. Um, we're going to focus on continuing to streamline all of our HR processes. Uh, currently in the planning phase of a job fair for our recreation center, which should happen in March of twenty-twenty-six. And, uh, we'll be launching a citywide intranet. So again, anyone with a City of Greenville email address will have access to that intranet that can be used as a central repository of information for the handbook, the policies. We can make announcements, this will be a central place that people can go to get information and stay up to date on HR initiatives. Overall, the budget ask for next year is going up for about, by about twenty-four percent. The bulk of that increase comes from the request for an additional headcount in HR for us to be successful with the implementation of several of these initiatives. Um, the other piece to that puzzle is, uh, professional services such as digital background checks, the skills assessments that we discussed earlier. But the, by and large, the, the biggest piece to that, uh, increase is going to be that additional headcount. Any questions for me?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a fantastic presentation. I think we all really love the direction that you have the entire department headed. So my two questions were going to be along, around leadership and then staffing, and you answered both of those.
Awesome.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, um, administrative services and finance.
Yep, thank you, TJ. I'm going to do administrative services and finance. Obviously, we have a, um, an opening, a vacant position as the finance and administrative services director, so I'm standing in for that. Um, and I just want to thank the staff, the administrative services and the finance staff for helping me with this presentation. I didn't do it all alone, um, they did their piece to it. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. I might not know the answer completely, but I'll definitely can get you the answer for that as we go through this. So, um, we'll start with the leadership team. Uh, the finance and administrative services director is vacant. We have Chris McAllister as our first facilities and fleet superintendent. So he takes charge of all our buildings, all our cars, things like that. Um, Desiree is our municipal court administrator, I've been doing that for a really long time. And then also Steve Sines, he's our, um, information technology manager and been with us for a really long time as well. So we have a really good team, um, so been, in, in that vacancy, they've really stepped up and really been able to, um, obviously they have questions and decisions that need to be made, so they come to me with those. But, um, I feel very confident with, with these, with this leadership team in place, um, for them, um, that we're, we're keeping our heads above water at this point. Okay, progress in review. So this is everything between finance, IT, courts, fleet, and facility that they've, um, kind of been through. Kind of the, kind of the highlights, um, obviously, uh, for finance, where they're trying to streamline everything. We're wiring as many payments as possible. Um, I can attest that they are getting to that point because I used to sign probably, I sign checks on a weekly basis because you have to have a wet signature along with our digital signatures on the checks. And I used to sign probably, you know, it could be, because we also do ch, process checks for juice as well. It could be anywhere from, you know, twenty to twenty-five a week of checks. And now I'm, we're getting to about five, maybe six checks a week, um, which the wet signatures are only checks over five thousand. So those bigger payments and things like that, we're really streamlining that and everybody's going to wiring, um, in that process. Um, so they did transition, uh, from manual, uh, to online bidding and that's been going very well. Um, as you guys have seen with some of the contractors, there's been different contractors. Um, obviously, it's a lot easier to submit online, um, so I think they really enjoy that. I think, um, we've had more contractors bidding on items than we had in the past due to the system. So I think it's been really positive, um, in that sense. On the IT side of things, they're really trying to prep for the network infrastructure for the upcoming facilities with the rec center, um, and the fire EOC as well. So they're trying to work on that, um, also get the server room ready for those kind of things. Uh, new backup, uh, for recovery. Um, and off, obviously, as a continuing effort, replacing those desktop computers across multiple city departments, which they support, all of these departments support every department within the city. Um, courts, um, they have some staffing transitions that they've gone through this year. And then they've also implemented a payment kiosk. If you get any kind of ticket through the City of Greenville, and let's just say you can't get there until after you get off of work, then you can certainly go up to this payment kiosk, uh, make your payment and be done with it, um, and then move on down the road. So that's been really, uh, a positive, um, implementation of that payment kiosk. On the fleet side, um, there's the equipment that they purchased in the twenty-twenty-four auction. It brought in four hundred and five thousand, so that's positive. So that'll help continue to fund our, uh, enterprise fleet replacements. Those are those three-year trucks that are, are vehicles, I don't want to say just trucks, but vehicles that are going off, um, of the lease. And so selling those back as a three-year vehicle as opposed to a fifteen-year vehicle, um, has been really positive and actually bought in, um, a really good amount of money. So that's been able to fund anything new that we've added. You know, if we add, like, say, police officers, which they've requested three police officers, that would include three. So this would help fund that. Um, and then we also launched our in-house generator maintenance. So you guys were able to allow us in this current budget year to hire a generator technician. And so that, um, Chris and his staff has been working with him and he takes care of every single generator, um, in the city of Greenville. And that's it, that's his only job, he maintains those, um, which that includes, we have, uh, you know, two really large generators at, um, water treatment and wastewater treatment, which those are a lot, you saw pictures of Roberts at the last presentation, um, keeping PD server rooms. Um, and then that includes, um, all of our, we have mobile generators that we use for the lift stations. They're keeping those up to date, uh, Reese Davis, obviously that one's down now. But this building, um, civic center, the animal shelter, all those that we implemented during the COVID, um, times, um, that's literally all they do is maintain those, um, and make sure the maintenance of those is done on, you know, when it needs to be done. So that's been really positive, um, to be able to keep that done. Um, let's see, if you've been to the, on the facility side of things, if you've been to the civic center lately, um, it looks, um, we've replaced the floors, they painted the walls, they painted the doors, they've replaced the lights. So really just kind of giving it a facelift, um, and bringing it up to date. So it just looks a whole lot better, kind of looks like a different building on the inside. Um, and then also our break room in this building, um, unfortunately had to be remodeled because when they remod, when they were working on the project upstairs, they needed reinforcements to be able to hold the stage because of all the heavy equipment they had doing the steel. Um, that they had to put some reinforcements, so it kind of tore up, uh, a little bit of our break room. So we decided, let's just tear it up and redo what we can in the current budget year. So, and that's all being done in-house with our staff that we have. Um, so they're being able to do that, so we're not having to contract that out, so that's been really good. Um, and then we also dedicated a person, um, he was originally in parks, um, for downtown maintenance. I don't know if you've seen Kevin down there, but he does all the weed spraying, he does all the cleaning, uh, picking up trash. He does everything that needs to be done, um, downtown from a downtown area. And so that's been really positive from a maintenance standpoint, is having somebody dedicated. He works out of this building now under the facilities, and so that's just been really positive to keep, keep that going and keep that program. Uh, let's see, this is municipal court. Like I said, um, Desiree is the court administrator, uh, the Abby Sullivan is the associate judge. And then under you guys is, um, you guys elected, uh, C.J. Crawford as a municipal judge. Um, no news is good news in our world, and so, um, everything's been good from that front. And then we've got, uh, municipal court specialists. And then we also have, um, a court clerk that's part-time, uh, which in the request, we are going to ask to move her to a full-time. Um, we've implemented a traffic, uh, program with the police, with their, with their section, their traffic division. And so that's increased in the amount of tickets and processing and things like that. Um, and so, um, the, the, it's going to be minimal cost to ask, uh, for the court clerk, um, to be moved to full-time because she's part-time with benefits already, so it's really just the increase in time. So I think on the later side, I think it's about twelve thousand dollars to increase her to full-time. So it's just really minimal. Here's everything that they do, obviously with citations, um, they have, you know, they schedule the court docket, the juries, uh, the new municipal court specialist and court clerk. They process all the citations, like I said, um, and those are their numbers for the traffic cases, uh, which in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four is five seventy-four. And then you'll see year-to-date for this current year is eleven eighty-five. So I think we're, um, I think the traffic, new traffic division has really helped that and sent a lot of attention on the traffic, um, to be able to do that. And then the non-traffic cases, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four was one seventy-three, and twenty-four, twenty-five jumped to five thirty-eight. In their budget, that's about a ten percent increase, uh, from four fifty-one, six ninety-five to four ninety-five. Uh, the majority of that's going to be that, um, your insurance and the merit. That's going to be the majority of those two costs increased for them. So that's twenty-four, twenty-five, here's twenty-five, twenty-six. So it looks pretty similar. Uh, on the finance side of things, we've got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, uh, uh, pro, uh, I guess, process, employees in that division. So any range from anywhere from a finance analyst, uh, to our purchasing agent handles all purchasing, uh, finance specialists, and then Anna over there, the finance coordinator, she also helps on the facilities and fleet side and she also, uh, manages the civic center. Finance, this is everything they do, they process everything that we, everything that has to do with the dollar, whether it's incoming or outgoing, they're processing checks. Um, they're going, they went, like I said earlier, they went full online with the full online procurement system and Brenna, uh, handles all of that, so that's been going really well. Um, let's see, uh, budgeting obviously is in there, uh, what they do. Um, they process, and keep in mind, they process all the payments for juice as well. So those process, all those wires, all those checks, everything like that. Um, the audit runs through, uh, this, uh, department, the monthly financial reporting, uh, the year-end audit, um, anything with bonds, um, anything like that that happens, a black drink transition, anything billing with the blackjack and working with juice, all that runs through their department. Here's their numbers, so checks and bank drafts, um, generated were approximately a hundred and ninety-four million. Current year-to-date is about a hundred and eighty million. A lot of those bigger payments, um, we also, we have a lot of big projects going on right now. So at any time, I think in the last couple of weeks, just since I've been doing it, I mean, we've paid out, I mean, once a week about six million or so, but that includes the rec center. That includes the raw water line, those payments are going out, um, those wire payments are going out. Um, and then we also have the EOC payments are going out. So there's a lot of big payments that are going out right now. So that's, that's a big number, credit card transactions, two-point-six million. Um, and then we converted about eight, from ten thousand to eighteen thousand, uh, credit card, that's our purchasing card. Uh, it's a little bit easier to process through those, there's not as many checks have to be written for that. So, so it's kind of a lot faster process and a lot cleaner, more efficient. And then general entries created was forty-six thousand, and then year-to-date at twenty-nine thousand.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Uh, do we know if there's any savings to be had on credit card fees by using other payment methods?
Uh, most of the time, we don't get charged credit card fees. Um, if it's a, you know, if it's a big credit card fee, so it's a big payment, then we'll write a check for it. So we typically, um, we typically don't.
I assume a lot of that is just retail?
Yeah, a lot of it, you know, is at your Walmarts or your, you know, at your tractor supply staples, um, Amazon or places like that, that that happens and we don't get charged those credit card fees. But if it's a large payment and we're going to get charged a substantial fee, then they'll, they'll put a halt on it. You know, it's for hotel rooms when, obviously, when you guys travel or we travel.
Or wholesale suppliers for something.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, the feed store, um, and then Brandon will work, um, you know, it's, uh, Brandon, I mean, I think he does something at the, um, at the feed store, I think he buys food down there. And so I think they have a, a small credit card charge, but it's not large. So, um, you know, to process a check, I can't remember what GP said the cost of it was, but we, we look at that and, and Brandon will make sure and pay attention and say, hey, do we really need to, you know, use the credit card for this? And, and we do have a finance credit card. So if there is, you know, because our, our employees have limits, um, they can only do so much in one transaction and so much a day and so much a month. So it's something outside of that, then that has to go through either my office or the finance director's office to be able to utilize that. So, so we do look at that. Because it's a lot easier, it's a lot easier to process a credit card than it is also, a lot less time-consuming than writing a check, getting it in the mail, processing all that. You know, for if you're just going to do, you know, fifteen-dollar check, it's just not worth it. But some of them still like our, you know, um, I think there's, we have a couple of contractors that still like to come in. They'll physically come in, pick up their check and then walk out the door and we don't have to send it. So there's a few of those that like that still, so. And then here's their budget, which was an increase of about eight percent. Um, most of that is going to be in the, uh, person, on the personnel side, between the insurance and the merit. Uh, so it went from seven thirty-five to seven ninety-two, no major increases in any contracted services or anything like that. Pretty, pretty substantial, or pretty, um, flat in that sense. pretty substantial or pretty, um, flat in that sense. And then here's our facilities and our fleet. So that, like I told you, they're all under our, uh, facilities maintenance and fleet superintendent, Chris McAllister. Um, so his fleet team is there on the left, um, which he has a foreman in fleet. He also has a foreman uh, on the facility side. And like I told you, Anna, she's our central services and finance coordinator. So she helps him kinda process administratively everything. She handles all of the, um, reservations for the civic center. Um, and then these are the custodians on the facility side, um, that we still do utilize in addition to, um, our contractor that we utilize for some of our buildings. Um, and then we also have, uh, our civic center attendant, Pat Couch. She's out there at the civic center and that's the only place that she stays. Uh, Carmen, um, she's our building attendant and she's, uh, her main job is upstairs at the GMA. So she's strictly used in the GMA. Um, and then Hiroy is in our building. Um, and then Q, she stays over at the police department. And then everything else gets, um, cleaned by the contractors. And then Dakota, Terry, Angel and Ben. And then we also have a vacancy for a maintenance tech, um, which we were gonna hire in quarter three this year to start training, um, to get ready for the EOC because we thought it was gonna happen a little sooner and the rec center. Um, so that's really, um, that position is vacant at this, at this time. So we'll, we'll start the hiring process of that. And then they can start training them once the EOC and the rec center and those kinda things for anything kinda building. And we can stay on top of that, uh, from that sense. Um, I did talk to, um, Chris about the rec center. Um, we're most likely from a cleaning standpoint, gonna probably, uh, bid that out and see what we can get for that because that's gonna be a large, um, uh, building to be able to do it. And I don't, we don't believe our current contractors would be able to handle that uh, from that sense. So we'll go through that process, um, in the next, uh, budget year. Let's see. And then their increase was, uh, fourteen percent. Uh, the majority of that was the, I think we did increase from a contracted services. Uh, we did increase for the EOC, uh, for the, uh, current cleaning contract to increase that just a little bit from the facility side of things to increase in there. And then also the merit and the insurance increase. So that's kinda what that looks like from there. Yeah, contracted services went up slightly there. That's, that's the majority of that difference. And then here is what they do from, uh, the civics. We have twenty-three buildings that they service and maintain. There was four hundred and seven events staffed at the civic center of last budget year, this current budget year, year-to-date, there's three hundred and thirty-five events that have been staffed. So you can, you can see the utilization of that facility is very well. Um, the square footage that they cover by the custodial services is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three fifty-three. Um, and then they began tracking their, uh, help desk tickets for facilities maintenance, which can be anywhere from changing a light bulb to fixing a doorstop. I've seen them all kinds of, to bigger things like obviously like the break room, anything like that. So if I went from, they're at nine hundred and thirteen last year and they're already at eight hundred and nineteen for this current year. Improvements in projects, uh, the J-Lu splash pad doors, um, they painted the chemical room doors. Oh, they built them and replaced them. And then they did, Brett did tell me that they had, had, they were heavy. So they're heavy-duty doors apparently. And they had to, uh, have a crane to put those back in, but those were done in-house. And then that's the civic center to the right there with the floors, the painting, and they also painted the doors there and replaced the lighting. So it looks a little bit brighter. Um, projects they would like to plan for twenty-twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six would be the AC replacement in this building for the first floor, um, which is three hundred and fifty-one thousand, six fifty-two, which is actually a cooling unit and then a condenser unit. Um, there for this first floor, um, the annex roof replacement is about three hundred thousand. Um, that's really a need, that's been needed to be done for the last couple of years. So we've kinda, um, I wouldn't say pushed it too far, but I think it's at the point we need to replace it. Um, touch-ups at the library with the painting is about fifteen thousand. They'd also like to paint the annex and redo the flooring there. If you've been over there lately, it's just really out of date. It looks like a, I think they took some paint that they had left over from another project and put it in that building and it looks purplish. I don't know if you've been over there in a while, but it looks really terrible. So just a little touch-ups. All that would be done in-house. Um, our guys would be painting that. Um, and then Brandon did request for the animal shelter roof insulation, about forty thousand. That would be the insulation that's above the kennels on the inside. Um, so he'd like to redo that to help with the, um, the cooling, um, and also help with the noise, um, as well. And then just some security upgrades with some cameras, some new gates, his gates. There's some open spots there. There's, there's gates, but there's not fencing around everything. So it's just some security things to keep, um, folks out of there. Um, he does have people that wander in and out of, around his facility. So people and, and animals as well. And fleet maintenance, um, so from a fleet side, they've completed year-to-date, uh, sixteen hundred uh, work orders up from twenty-five hundred last year. Um, they maintain, uh, seventy-eight emergency vehicles, hundred and seventeen city, fifty-eight juice for a total of two fifty-three. Uh, their equipment and trailers, um, city's a hundred and seventy, juice is forty-three. So that's two hundred and thirteen total. Um, and then just a reminder, police, uh, inspections and equipment are done on a weekly basis. Fire on a monthly and everybody else on a quarterly basis. That includes anything from trailers to dump trucks to tractors. It all runs through that fleet maintenance. And the only time they send it out is if they can't work on it. Um, so their increase was a little, was seven percent, uh, just went up from five twenty-one to five fifty-eight. Um, and that's just gonna be due to the merit and as well as the insurance. Uh, no additions on the fleet side, uh, were requested. And then IT, uh, we have Steve, Steve Sines as the IT, uh, manager. He's got Timothy Davis, which predominantly stays over at the police department. Uh, Patricia, Alex and Geraldine are obviously in this building. And they are requesting and a special, an additional specialist. And we decided to go ahead and do it for six months. And that would be to prepare for all the IT needs that are gonna be at the EOC as well at the rec center and at Reese Davis, getting all that set up. So they are requesting, um, a six-month, uh, six-months cost of that. So we included six, a budgeted, uh, six months' cost for that. And so they maintain, uh, sixty-eight software, major software programs, and then nine hundred and eighty-eight minor software. Hardware units maintained is eight oh nine. And their help desk tickets were ninety-seven hundred last year. And they're already year-to-date at fifty-four hundred. So that includes anything from phones, printers, servers, um, monitors and just anything that you need to keep, keep doing your job. They'll, you call them and that's where those help desk ticket numbers come from. Here's their IT budget. It went from eleven percent, I'm sorry, it's up eleven percent from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six. The majority of that is gonna be that six-month position as well as the merit and the insurance increase. So just pretty much, uh, the same. And then here's kind of a summary of everything. So courts, they had one part-time employee to full-time, which I stated was twelve thousand dollars. Finance, they had no personnel or capital requests from their side. On the fleet side, we need to look at the street sweeper for the, uh, streets department so that a large excavator as well as a backhoe, the two dump trucks with the sand spreaders. We talked about that within the department. So we'll go through that process. Uh, the annex roof replacement, the AC replacement in this building. And then the animal shelter roof insulation and security upgrades. And then obviously from the IT side, they requested the computer user support specialist at forty-three thousand for six months. Um, beyond that, on the fleet side, we still wanna look at a new public work service center. Um, that would be something I think we're gonna, I'm going to look at and address in the twenty-twenty-six bond offering. Um, because the majority of that, um, public work service center would be on the water wastewater side. And then we'd also house streets there. So that's something we can look at. Um, that's just a complete estimation at twenty million for that as we grow. And then, uh, courts potential space, uh, for future growth, um, that's something we need to look at at some point as well. Like I stated, obviously we're adding more officers. And so, you know, that substation's gonna come into play, I think, a lot sooner than we think. And so we need to also think about that on the court side as well. And then IT, um, they would, uh, eventually like to go to a transition to the cloud, but that's a big undertaking. So we'd like to be able to do that. And then also from the, uh, the fire admin, uh, building completion, there's some disaster recovery backup sites and things like that that they wanna uh, look at for the future, uh, for future planning from that perspective. So I'll be happy to answer and try to answer any questions that you guys had. I know it was a lot of information.
Remind us where GP went. Wasn't he on leave? Or did he actually leave?
No, he actually left.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. He left. Yeah.
Have you started the process?
Yes, I don't know. Where did you write? Has it been posted?
So it has not been posted yet. We are using the same, um, the same, we're using the same executive recruiting, um, agency that recruited me. Um, so SGR is our partner in that. And, uh, I've already sent over several iterations of the recruiting brochures. So within this week, it should be posted.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Yep, appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, uh, next we will move to executive session. And all the items for discussion are listed on the work session agenda. So there's a copy of those right out front if you'd like one.
Yeah, it's time for that. Four fifty-one.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys ready? Okay, we'll call the regular session meetings order. We're at the record reflect at 6:01. If you will stand, we'll have Ben Collins say his name.
Heavenly Father, God, we thank you for an opportunity to deliberate together over the people's issues. God, I pray that we would be obedient servants to you, Lord, and magnify your truth and your commands to us and to be wise in how we take on public business. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
You'll say the pledge of allegiance with me? Pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no presentations tonight. Correct, and then let me call your attention to citizens to be heard. Citizens to be heard are invited to address the council on topics that are not already scheduled for a public hearing or listed on the agenda. Do we have any citizens to be heard tonight?
We have one today. It's David Ellis.
All right, sir. If you'll just state your name and address, then you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is David Ellis. This is 4015 Dixon Circle, Greenville, Texas. Today I want to introduce the Greenville Citizens Police Academy. It is the policy of the Greenville Police Department to utilize all resources available within the community to enhance the quality of life and reduce the opportunity for criminal activity volunteers. They are needed. Beginning September 8th through November 24th, 2025, the Greenville Citizens Police Academy will start a new class. This 12-week program is held on Monday evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And participants will learn about 36 interesting topics such as patrol procedures, narcotics investigations, criminal law, juvenile law, accident investigation, use of force, criminal investigations, communication equipment, the court system, the aerial drone program, 29 interdiction, the police officer selection process, telephone dispatch, DWI simulation, and crime prevention. This is just a small sample of the interesting topics that will be discussed starting September 8th. Your hands-on experience will include events such as a traffic stop example using defensive tactics, use of force scenarios, crime scene investigation techniques, impaired driving simulation, and firearms training at the Greenville Police Department range. Participants will have the opportunity to ride with a police officer and to experience law enforcement from an officer's perspective. The Greenville Citizens Police Academy class is made up of a cross-section of entire community professionals, homemakers, laborers, students, educators, retirees, and others are encouraged to apply their application. You must be at least 21 years old of age and enroll and live, work, or attend school in the Greenville vicinity. The Citizens Police Academy is a valuable opportunity for everyone who is interested in learning more about law enforcement. Individuals who wish to apply will be subject to a background check. The program is free of charge. Yes, it's free of charge. There is a limited number of seats available, so anyone interested in participating in the Greenville Citizens Police Academy should submit their application now as soon as possible. The application is available on the City of Greenville website. Your application can be dropped off at the Greenville Police Station or mailed to Officer James Hamilton at 3000 Lee Street in Greenville, 75401. He welcomes your questions also. His email address is jhamilton@ci greenville dot t x dot u s. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Okay, moving on to public hearings, public testimony. Public testimony occurs when citizens are invited to address the council on topics that are already on the agenda. That'll start with Resolution 8A tonight. We have no ordinances. So, moving on to Resolution 8A, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing an agreement with game time for $111,000. Bob Byrne.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, we've been working at Reservoir Four trying to get like a little recreational park area set up for the citizens. And like I was saying, the Reservoir Four was built in 1927. It's been a recreational fishing lake for a lot of years now. And, you know, we put the dock in. Everybody's going, everybody loves the dock. Hopefully we get the other dock installed, you know, in the next couple, two or three months. The concrete work has just got finished up. I sent pictures this summer. Looks really good, so everybody's excited about that. And then hopefully we can start the asphalt work here pretty quick too. But for the kids and stuff that doesn't like to fish, we were talking about putting a playground system out there. Me and, I've been working with Brett Quarles at Parks, and he hooked me up with his guys that do all his playground systems. And this is the playground system we're talking about, maybe trying to get to put out there. And some of the tables and chairs that are going to go out there also. The picnic tables with the awning built into it and the trash receptacles that you can boat all down. That way we'll have, you know, it won't get feet and walk off. But anyway, this is the playground system. It's $111,030.96 with the game time and Cunningham Recreation. And we're just here to ask if we can get this going for the citizen.
Thank you. Any questions from council? None? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against?
Robert, I just want to take a moment to say thank you for having the vision to see this through. We really appreciate your efforts and, you know, adding this to the park system here in Greenville. I think it's greatly appreciated, and I just want to say thank you for that.
It's like Brett's helped out a whole lot too with it, so we appreciate that.
I think y'all really went beyond what we could imagine.
Well, we've had a vision and it's coming together, so hopefully it all, everybody appreciates it.
Yeah. It is that.
All right.
I make the motion approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, please vote. And it passes unanimously. Is that unanimous?
Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Resolution 8B, consideration and action on a resolution authorizing a change order number eight with Adolphson and Peterson Construction. Brett Quarles.
Mayor, President, and Council, good evening. So this is change order number eight. The bulk majority of this change order is going to be spent at Reesee-Davies. So currently we have a granite trail, decomposed granite DG that runs behind Reesee. And so what we're proposing to do is to make that concrete. We've kind of put concrete around all our facilities and kind of eliminating that DG. So that came in at $95,000. This would also upgrade our control system for running our units at all the facilities. So it would give our facilities folks, Chris, the ability to control all the city buildings on this software. So that was the other part of the upgrade. And then some of the other stuff is just small details with the pool, changing some of the architectural stuff with the, with some of the steel grade beams. So I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
No questions from council? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor or opposition?
I do have a quick question, if you don't mind. Yes. Related to the sports park. I know that part of the construction, like we have the construction fence up and it's blocking off access to like the park and the gazebo there, the playground, I mean. Do you think any of that will be open before it's all done? Or is it gonna all be done first and then all of that comes down?
Yeah, we've been kind of talking to them as they finish stages. And the only thing lacking in that, the new parking lot by the pump track and playground is lights. And so, but for them to move that fence, it's like $32,000.
Oh, that's right. We did talk about this before.
So, yeah, so that's something we, depending on when they get the lights in the parking lot, because we took out that intersection where you can't get to it from the money or from the cell street side anymore. So it wouldn't really do any good because that road wouldn't be open down there, so.
Cool, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
No other comments and no public testimony? What is the pleasure of the council?
A move that we approve.
I second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the, I would ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar.
City Council meeting minutes from June 24th. A resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with North Central Texas Emergency Communications District for 911 service and consideration and action on a resolution approving the denial of application for approval of a rate change submitted by Encore Delivery Company and authorization to participate in proceedings at the PUC.
Questions from council? I just want to specify on C, that is denial of application for approval for rate change. If there's no questions, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Please vote. Okay, there are no city and staff reports tonight. Is there any discussion for proposed agenda items? If there's none, you have no board and commission minutes before you. Executive session has already been completed, so this meeting is adjourned.